Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectment's meeting for September 25, 2014. First item on the agenda, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor? Approval, excuse me, approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay. Old business, open sand bids. You got your knife?
I don't, both does. Mine's MIA.
We have three bids tonight. Okay, first one is from Peppin Precast. Regards 3/8 screened winter sand quote, we would like to quote the following price for your upcoming winter sand needs. Quantity 3,000 to 6,000 yards delivered to 839 Sandborne Road, Acton, Maine. Price $11 a yard. Price range 33,000 to 66,000. Additional notes, delivery may begin as soon as possible but shall not be extended past April 1st. Delivery may not exceed 700 cubic yards per week. And that's Matthew Peppin.
Did you hear that last part of my day, Peppin?
Delivery may begin as soon as possible but shall not extend past April 1st.
Yeah.
And delivery may not exceed 700 cubic yards per week.
Okay, I didn't know.
No?
3,000.
Okay. Next one is Turks Sand and Gravel. To the Board of Selectmen, sealed bid for winter sand, 2014, 2015. Turks Sand and Gravel will supply the Town of Acton, Maine with 3/8 screened winter sand delivered to the salt sand shed on 839 Sandborne Road for a cost of $6.20 per yard, delivery included. No other conditions. And the last one is Landscapers Depot. Landscapers Depot has been in business for over 20 years and has been supplying many of the local municipalities with various aggregates, mulches, soils, hardscapes, green goods, as well as leaf and yard waste disposal. We have a reputation for supplying quality products at fair prices along with a superior service. We are pleased to provide the Town of Acton with the following quote. Screened road sand, 570 a yard, delivered to your site. Note, our sand is one quarter screened, but we asked for what, three quarter, right? No, 3 eighths.
Three eighths.
They're saying one quarter screened sand.
Quarter of an inch.
Yeah, you asked for 3 eighths, right?
Yeah, as long as it's below three, I mean, three is below.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if you wanted it up, okay. Okay, if you have any questions regarding this quote, please contact me directly. Dave, you want to come up and talk about these before we make a decision?
Yep. Okay, so we got...
Turks is 620 a yard delivered.
Peppins is 11.
Uh, Peppins is $11 a yard, but it only goes to April 1st, and delivery may not exceed 700 cubic yards per week.
Yeah, the April 1st isn't a big deal because usually by that, if we keep getting snowbath, then, yeah. And Landscapers Depot is now what, 570?
570, yep.
Yeah, okay. Well, we're off the top of my head. I mean, obviously, our Peppin, that's a little bit out of our price range.
Yeah.
We're talking five, little under $5 a yard difference between Turks and then more than obviously from Landscapers Depot. We've used Turkoff for the last, well, in the last five years, four of them. We had Rudy Peppin last year, no, two years ago. The only thing about the Landscapers Depot that I'm concerned about is the delivery timing. Back, I think it was three years ago, a nearby town took their quote, and it took them three weeks to get their sand in. Now, if Landscapers Depot will promise us that we'll have our sand in three days like we do now, because I want to inspect the sand, Scott and I really ought to go up and inspect the sand. The last time we went up there was real silty, and we don't want that. But the problem is if we don't get our sand in that three days like we typically do, then you're going to add on time and money on loaders and personnel.
Okay.
So, the cost. Myself, I would continue going with the 620 is way below what we're, what every town in the area pays. I mean, this is still way below, and we've, these guys are getting in there in three days. That's my suggestion.
Timeline, can you wait two more weeks so we give you and Scott a chance to go and look, talk to Landscapers Depot, give us your feedback, and we'll vote on it? We'll table it for two weeks?
Yeah, we can do, we can do that because I've got salt being delivered. As long as we can get our sand, it's tough because what's going to happen is these guys have to make sure they've got enough material, so they have to know. If Landscapers Depot will promise us that we can get it in the three days that we typically do, then, I mean, and the material is up to snuff, you know, obviously, you're talking almost what's, little under 50 cents a yard, above 40 cents a yard, whatever, 50 cents a yard.
All right, I tell you what, why don't you get in touch with Scott, the two of you go look and make sure the material's okay at 570 a yard, talk to them, make sure they're going to guarantee, and we can award the bid next Thursday at our...
Next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that would be fine. Two weeks is probably more than we really want to be doing.
That's our next televised meeting, but we can do it, we can do it in the other meeting because we've announced everything, and we're just going to look for some, you know, some guarantees from, since we've never used them before.
Yeah, I mean, what I would have liked, and I didn't think of this until later on, is when we put our sand bids out, that we, we put in a timeline, because you can give us...
Timeline for delivery?
Yeah, because the problem is, what happened in the nearby town is it took them three weeks to get sand in, and they were a little bit, they ended up costing so much more above and beyond what the other bids were, you know, they were going to get it there quicker. So, it turned into a fiasco, and I don't want to have that problem. We've had a really good relationship with these guys, you know, right here, you know, we had good, Rudy Peppin was good to us, and Turks has been good to us for four or five years now, so, but we can, I'll contact Scott, we'll go up and take a look at the material, and we'll get back to you probably by Tuesday, I would think, probably sooner the better, okay?
Sounds good, thanks, Steph. A motion to table decision on the salt bids until next Thursday?
I move that we postpone till next Thursday.
Seconded.
All in favor?
And FYI, I did order salt.
Okay.
We got 600 ton coming in next week around some point in time. I did ask for the company to deliver with triaxles so that we don't have to sit down there, you know, push them up every time, so it's going to save us some money, so we don't have guys sitting down there with a loader for nothing.
Okay.
The public safety building, Advanced Asphalt, they're going to be, finish up tomorrow, they got a couple more cracks they got to redo, and a couple old doodads, but everything there should be all said and done, speaking with them.
Okay, I can have you come up at the end to do that, okay?
Oh, oh, is there something on here for that?
Well, we have other business, you can come up then, yeah. Okay, update on the Boston Post cane?
Sure. Last Saturday, we, the Acton Chapley Historical Society was kind enough to sponsor a get-together for the Boston Post cane, they did a nice reception. We awarded the Boston Coast Post cane to Louise E. Horn. She is right now the oldest resident in the Town of Acton, and she received the cane. It was about 30 to 40 people there, quite a few relatives of hers were there.
Brother.
All three of us selectmen were there.
Listen.
It was a, it was a good time, so congratulations to Mrs. Horn.
Okay, salt sand shed update. As you know, we've been talking at the last several meetings how the insurance company had decided that they were no longer going to provide liability coverage on the salt shed, which meant that we would not be able to use it this winter to put our salt and sand in. They did give us an opportunity to get an engineer involved, which we did. We had engineer come from Rupp Buildings in Sanford, came out, a civil engineer, said that the building has not changed or moved since 2002, but he said that he had concerns of snow load, so that if we put in a slippery surface on the building, that they would allow us to use it for next year. We had Hall Brothers was here working on the town, on the town hall roof, and I talked to them, and they suggested that we put tarps up on it. We have done that, Hall Brothers did it, so we have now got a letter from the insurance company saying the purpose of the visit on September 16th was to visit the sand building on Sandborne Road to take photographs and observe the temporary roof covering that was installed by the roofing vendor. In my opinion, the town has completed the recommendation made by Rupp Incorporated and their professional engineer, Jamie Basra. I have saved a copy of this letter dated 8/29/2014 in the electronic folder here at Risk Management Service for future reference. The material used to cover the roof shingles should lessen the snow load and extend the life of the building at least one more year. I would recommend that periodic visual inspections of the temporary roof covering be made during the winter to ensure it is not deteriorating. All information obtained has been shared with the town senior underwriter, Susan Caston, who will contact you with any additional questions. Susan Caston has written, "Property coverage provided direct physical damage to the structure, i.e. fire, lightning, windstorm, collapse due to weight of ice and snow, et cetera. General liability provides coverage for the bodily injury or property damage of the town negligently causes to a third party, i.e. road contractors, employees, removing sand or salt shed collapses on them. The road contractors' workers' comp carrier pays for the injury, and then the carrier subrogates against the town's general liability insurer, saying the injury was due to the town not maintaining the building. Workers' compensation covers medical payments and lost time payments per state statute for town employees." What this saying is, they are only giving us liability. If anything happens to the building, the building is not covered, has no coverage at all, but should anybody be injured by working in the building, then they will have liability coverage, which is all we have had since 2000. So, we are planning to come forward with plans for a new salt shed at the town meeting in June. Okay, Mary Grant fundraiser results. Mary Grant had their concert for the park Saturday night at the Acton School. They would like to thank everybody that attended and donated. They came out with over $600 after expenses to go into the Mary Grant Fund. So, thank you again to all that attended and donated, and it will be on the TV channel if anybody wants to see what the concert was about, because I think they're planning on having this be an annual event. If you like bluegrass, there were some pretty good bands there. All right, town report, deadlines?
Ted, may I jump in real quick here? Scott just called me.
Yeah.
And he's recommending that we go with Turkoff's bid, whether or not that's...
He doesn't want to go and check the other stuff?
No, he's convinced that Turkoff is the way to go. I just got off the phone with him, so he asked me to come up there and tell you that, so, and I agree with him, so.
I'll entertain a motion then, on sand and gravel bids?
I move that we accept Turks sand and gravel bid.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, we are accepting Turks sand and gravel bid for $6.20 per yard, delivery included.
Great.
All right, Bill?
Okay, some memo to all department heads and committees from the Board of Selectmen. It's that time again to start thinking about your department or committee's letter for the upcoming town report. Things will be done a bit differently this year. You will see two major changes. First is that all reports must be submitted electronically in Microsoft Word. If you do not have access to Word, then please schedule a time to come into the town hall with the office manager to use our equipment. The second change this year is deadline. In the past, there have been excessively, this has been excessively lenient. Often, we are months past the original deadline and are still trying to chase down people for the report. This will no longer happen. All reports are due by Friday, October 17, 2014. Anyone who has not submitted a letter by Friday, October 3, will receive one reminder call. After Friday, October 17, you will no longer be asked or reminded, simply omitted. Please email your letter no later than October 17 to thetownclerk@actonmaine.org and copy Thank you in advance for your cooperation with this.
I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Von der Vellen? Okay. Building permit refund request. Ken, you want to come up and address this?
I'll let him go first.
Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Greg Von der Vellen. I issued, I asked for the original building permit, and I am the one that asked for the refund as well. Are you familiar with the process and the whole Clancy land issue? We had a, I entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Clancy. In working with Ken, we decided the best way to make sure this was a buildable lot was to secure a building permit on it, and the purchase and sale agreement was contingent on that valid building permit. After getting the building permit, it was contested a couple of times by, in a butter, Mr. Lynch, I believe. It was contested through, through a zoning issue. I think it was then contested ultimately at the Superior Court level. The negotiations failed at that point. The time, the cost and expense for the interpretation and the clarification of whether it was a valid building permit got a bit, it was very long process, got very expensive. I think it was very expensive for you. Got very expensive for me. So, the negotiations ultimately failed. The court never, I think, heard the case and never actually decided ultimately if it was a valid building permit. So, I think in hindsight, it was a much more involved, much more complicated issue in question on whether it was just a straightforward building permit. My intention was to buy the land and build, build a house there to use and enjoy. The abutter didn't see it that way. So, you know, in hindsight, it was, it was much more involved, much more complicated. Ended up not using the building permit, ended up not buying the land. I ended up buying a different piece, a different house on the other side of the lake. So, I am an owner on the lake, I'm a taxpayer in Acton, so, all things considered, I would respectfully ask that you consider refunding all or part of that building permit.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions you have, happy to answer.
Well, Ken was involved, so we'll hear from him first.
Okay.
Good evening. We don't track the permits by hours, how much it takes and stuff, but just reviewing in this, we went through our logs. I've probably got at least 60 to 70 hours just in the primary permit on that, and then once it got the administrative appeal through the zoning board, there's probably another 25 hours into that. So, we're teetering some ways around 80 hours into the permit already without any inspections or anything like that. The case was an administrative appeal through the zoning board. The zoning board did uphold the town's decisions to issue the permit, so everything was valid with the permit at the, at the local level. It did get brought to Superior Court but never followed through. The abutter ended up buying the property and eliminating the possibility of a house being built next to him.
Okay. And, so, just with your hours alone, we're, we're at this, this cost of this building permit, which was $2,328?
With the zoning board brought into it as well, the time spent in for that, yeah.
Okay, and then on top of that, we have our own legal fees because we believed it to be, well, we still do, believed it to be a valid permit. Zoning Board of Appeals believed it was a valid permit. We had our attorney representing us to prove that it was a valid permit, and then somebody took this all to the Superior Court, but we weren't involved at that stage with the lawyers because it never happened, is that correct? Okay. So, I, I think we've spent more than what you have paid for a building permit in order to support our beliefs that this permit was valid. What has happened because somebody took you to court can't be the cost of the taxpayers. So, I mean, if you want to respond to any of this, come on up.
No, thank you for that. I understand and I respect that, and I'm not trying to be unfair, and I appreciate all the time and effort and energy that went into it. It's, it was, you know, six, eight, nine months. I think it's been a year since, a year, two days ago since the permit was originally issued. Understand that I also put a lot of time, effort, money, personal expense into it as well. I was not named in the suit or in the issue. The town was named, so I was never named other than as an interested party. So, just to clarify, it wasn't me who was being challenged, it was the town and, I think it was the town and ultimately the validity of whether the permit should have been issued at all, just to clarify that. I don't know that that makes any difference, and I'm not trying to be unreasonable.
No, no, I understand. So, what you're saying is they, they didn't take you to Superior Court, they took the Town of Acton to Superior Court.
That's right, and there was a motion to stay because at that time, the negotiations had stalled, obviously, after all of that time and effort. It was obviously contingent on that, and it became very clear that this was going to continue for much longer. The building window for me was closing. Mr. Clancy was getting a bit impatient, so it ultimately stalled. I chose not to move forward with it, so I think the court didn't take the case at that point because I was only the interested party, and without, without the purchase and sale, I think the court viewed it as withoutstanding at that point. So, I, just to clarify it.
No, but I'm glad you did.
Okay.
Either of you guys have anything?
No, not really. I don't see where we can refund anything we have, 1,100 plus dollars in legal fees and Ken's time and whatnot invested in this, between the, you know, 80-plus hours, so, yeah, unfortunately.
Bill, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think it's pretty clear what's happened and so forth. I don't think we are in a position at this point to refund that money.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we spent $1,320 on legal fees, and that doesn't include all the work of Kenny Paul and the Zoning Board of Appeals and all that, and we're going to have to look at this as, the cost was incurred because you came to us and asked for a building permit, and we can't, you know, be using tax dollars, give you back your money for the permit, and then use tax dollars to pay all these expenses because it was all, it all evolved from your applying for the building permit. So, I'll entertain a motion. Do you want to say anything else before we vote?
Yeah, sure. Again, not to, not to belabor the point, and I appreciate that, but it would have been cheaper to say no than to go through the process, and had I, had I known or appreciated that this would be contested or would have been contested to this extent, I never would have asked for the permit, and I never would have incurred the time or effort to invest in this myself. So, I have far more than the $2,300 into this failed adventure myself.
But...
I guess as an, and I understand and appreciate your position, and I fully respect that. I guess as an alternative, I am doing and planning and doing some work on this other property. It's not going to be worth a $2,300 building permit, but I would ask for, perhaps considering then as application of a credit against future work against that house, against that permit, if that would be reasonable.
Well, I don't think we can do that, Ken, can we? We can't take money from this and say we're going to apply it to a different permit, especially since we've spent more than this.
You could waive fees on the...
We could waive fees on the other permit, okay. Okay, we, what we'll have to do, that's a process too, though, right? You would have to come back and ask us. Kenny would present it to us, and we can come back and ask us to waive the fees on the next permit.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah, I would ask for that.
So, when you, when you fill out, yeah, when you fill out your application for your next one, because hopefully, there won't be all these expenses incurred, but the other thing that I think about is, I know Kenny and I've heard him say it many, many times, when somebody's coming in to buy property in town, he tells them to get the permits first, to make sure they can build what they want, because if you can't build what you want, and then you buy, you buy the land without checking into it, and then you find out afterwards, then it's, you know, buyer beware. So, he, I think he gave you great advice because look what happened. Had you bought that land and then came back down, it would have been a lot more money than this, and you would have been stuck with the land.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so, I'll entertain a motion?
I move that we refuse to refund the building permit money.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, in the process, you know now, when you apply for your permit, ask Kenny, Mr. Paul, to come back to the board and ask us to waive the fees for that permit, and we'll have to go through this process again, okay?
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, road committee appointment. We finally, after, how many months?
Years.
Have somebody that has decided they want to get on the road committee. To Larissa Crockett, the Selectmen of the municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as road committee member within and for the municipality of Acton until the conclusion of the annual town meeting in June 2015, given under our hand this 25th day of September 2014. A motion.
I move that we appoint Larissa Crockett as the new road committee member.
Seconded.
All in favor? Moussum Watershed Dam Coalition appointment. Again, we finally found somebody to fill in that position, so I think that makes all of our committees full. To Norman Lambert, the Selectmen of the municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as Moussum Watershed Dam Coalition member, excuse me, Moussum Lake resident, within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30, 2016, given under our hand this 25th day of September 2014. A motion.
I move that we accept Larissa Crockett as the new road...
Nope, we already did that one. Norman.
I move that we appoint, where are we? Norman Lambert, Normand Lambert, as the new Moussum Watershed Dam Coalition Committee.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, to the Board of Selectmen of Acton, Maine, Northern New England Telephone Operations LLC and Central Main Power Company respectfully request permission for a location for poles and cables and wires therein, including the necessary sustaining, supporting, and protecting fixtures in, along, upon, and across the following named public streets and highways in the Town of Acton. Sam Page Road, Sandborne Vale Road, placement of pole 1 and replacement of pole 2 through 7 from approximately 68 degrees westerly of the center line of H Road, 7 poles. This application is being submitted without public notice by publication. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with a plan filled here with mark Fairpoint number 2878815. Motion on the pole application.
I move that we accept the requested pole locations.
Seconded.
All in favor? All in favor? Okay, this one is the only one.
Okay.
Okay, Fairpoint Facilities Request. This is different. They're not giving a description of what they're asking for, but this is for a transformer?
Yeah, we're replacing poles.
Well, the poles were on the other one. This is just for the transformer?
Yeah, but it's on the second page. It talks about some pole replacements as well.
Oh, and then. That's the same key one.
It's a third one.
Okay, uh, Northern New England Telephone Operations LLC. Okay, yeah, replacing thirty-seven and placing new thirteen poles. Um, they just give a, uh, on Route one oh nine, northwest of center line of Sam Page Road, and then extending in a northwestly direction for distance of ten thousand five hundred five feet. Expect construction schedule to start three to four weeks after permit completion. Okay, and they're not going to provide public notice. Okay.
Nothing to sign.
Nothing to sign on that one? Okay. Motion to accept the utility location permit?
I move that we accept, uh, the, uh, facilities relocation request.
Seconded. All in favor? All right, and CMP state pole permit? Good night. Um, dear town manager, consistent with section thirty-five AMRSA, section two five oh three, Central Maine Power Company is providing you with the attached copy of notification for utility location permit that has been submitted to the MDOT. This letter also serves as notice that any, as part of the pole setting activity, trimming of vegetation may be required. If you wish to discuss any of these construction activities, please do not hesitate to contact the primary contact person listed on the pole application. This is the one that we have twice to sign?
No, that was the first one we had twice to sign.
Okay.
It should be, it should be, it was signed.
Okay. All right, um, permit for CMP for a pole? Motion?
Oh, I move that, uh, we accept the CMP state, uh, state pole permit.
Seconded. All in favor? This one's just one signature? Other business. Seeing none announcements? You guys got any announcements?
Do not.
All right, then. I think we just have, there was Fairpoint. Make sure we got this signed. Two places. Ah, that's one. Okay, motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor?